Township Zoning Commission Meeting of June 1st, 2023. Thought everyone could rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kelly, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Eichmann?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Ms. Coughlin?
Here.
Mr. Dose?
Here.
Mr. Dan Millar?
Here.
Okay, we have a addition to the agenda for tonight. Oath of Office. So Jeff, if you want to preside over the oath of office.
Thank you. Actually, you can both just kind of step down here in front. We'll just do them both together, save some time. You must both step right over here. Okay? So I'll ask you both to raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I state your name.
Craig Kessler.
Hi, John Dan Millar.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowland Swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of a member of the zoning commission.
The duties of a member of the zoning commission.
Of Sims Township, Hamilton County, Ohio.
Of Sims Township, Ohio.
To which I implore.
To which I implore. Thank you very much.
Okay, congratulations. Now, before you go back up, so.
Yeah. I think we usually do it in the trustees meeting. I'm okay with it.
Oh, yeah.
Right here, yeah.
Do you need to turn it off?
Yes.
Greg Kessler, will you show him how to turn his microphone on? Thank you. Yes, when you talk, I cannot hear you when I do minutes.
Okay, great. So we will now have approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
I can second that.
Mr. Eichmann?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Dose?
Yes.
Mr. Dan Millar?
Yes.
Okay, and everybody in your packets should have received the minutes of the meeting from February 15th. Does anybody have any changes or amendments or revisions? Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 15th.
I'll be happy to second that.
Mr. Eichmann?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Dose?
Abstain.
Mr. Dan Millar?
Abstain.
Okay, and we also have minutes from April 19th. Anybody have any changes, amendments, or revisions? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve those.
I will second the motion to approve.
Mr. Eichmann?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Abstain.
Mr. Dose?
Abstain.
Mr. Dan Millar?
Abstain.
Okay.
I was going to say that.
Yes.
All right. So now we have public hearings. And first one is Sims 88-5 Burger King modification.
Good evening, Brian Snyder. Development Services Administrator for the Hamilton County Planning and Development Department. You should have a copy of the staff report for this case. This is a final development plan modification request for the Burger King at 9065 Union Cemetery Road. Late this afternoon, I did receive a request from the applicant in this case for a continuance of their hearing until the July meeting. I will read your letter. I have sent it to Kelly for the file, but I'll read it into the record. It says, "To whom it may concern, Amplor Development LLC formally requests that the agenda for tonight's zoning meeting regarding the Burger King at 9065 Union Cemetery Road, Cincinnati, Ohio 45249 be postponed until the July meeting." So they're requesting a continuance. The public hearing has been opened as it's required to be. If you would like to grant the continuance, we would need a motion and approval of a motion to continue.
Okay, don't see any reason why not?
Happy to accommodate.
All right, so someone want to make a motion to continue that?
I can make a motion to continue the Burger King application.
Okay, anyone who want to second it?
I'll second it.
All right, keep your name in the record.
Oh, John Dan Millar?
No, no, no. Go ahead, Kelly.
Mr. Eichmann?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Dose?
Yes.
And Mr. Dan Millar?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Sims 2023-1 Silver Spring House for Mr. Snyder.
Yes. Brian Snyder, Development Services Administrator, Hamilton County Planning and Development. You should have a copy of the staff report for this final development plan. This is a request for consideration of a final development plan. A new zone change, Sims 2023-01, was approved by the Sims Township Trustees in April. That zone change is effective, so the Silver Spring House property, all of the previous zone changes in zoning history for that, has been replaced by this case. So the new property to the north that was being requested for the zone change has been changed to double E planned retail, along with the rest of the Silver Spring House properties now. It's all covered by one case, this case 2023-1. All planned development zone changes are required to have a final development plan approved before any construction can occur. So in this case, before the home can be demolished and the parking lot can be constructed, this final development plan is required. The remainder of the property, with the exception of the areas where the existing parking lot would connect to the new parking lot, the remainder of the property would remain the same. There are no changes to the building or parking areas, streetscape, or entrances on Snyder or on East Kemper Road. We did receive a set of plans that we prepared the staff report based on. And then Friday, we did receive a revised set of plans. So I will tell you that in looking at both sets, the original submittal and the revised set, there are no issues with compliance with the Sims Township Trustees' conditions of approval. So I will go into those briefly, and I'll try and highlight the changes. Essentially, the changes were related to two of the neighbors that discussed changes to the landscaping plan with the owner of the Silver Spring House, and there was some agreement to leave existing vegetation rather than replacing it with new vegetation. Other than that, all the plans from the original submittal and the Friday revisions are the same. So, the first three conditions of the trustee's resolution related to lighting, landscaping, and signage plans, all three of which have been submitted. There is no new signage being proposed, so the signage plan is simply that there's no signage being proposed. Other than that, you do have a copy of a landscaping and lighting plan, including revised landscaping plan from Friday. There was a four-foot sidewalk required along Snyder Road. The township had been asking that that sidewalk be pushed up to run right alongside Snyder Road with a square curb and a six-foot wide sidewalk to stop people from parking in the grass and to gravel near there. And then the plans for the township to install sidewalks was also along the street further up. And the applicant in the revised plans did show the six-foot sidewalk being right along the side of the road as requested by the township. So not only are they in compliance with the township trustees requirement, they're in compliance with the request of the township for a sidewalk that will address the parking along the side of the road. There is one freestanding sign that's not changing. The privacy fence that was required along the northern and eastern boundary buffers at eight feet tall is shown on the plans and did not change with the revisions. An eight-foot privacy fence would still be along the entire northern and eastern boundary buffers. There's a landscape plan that was required to conform to the landscape plan shown at the trustee's meeting on April 20th. I'll get back to that briefly. The vast majority of the landscape plan that was revised on Friday is the same as the landscape plan that was shown to the trustees at April 20th meeting and was submitted originally with their original submittal for this final development plan. And I'll highlight the two changes in a minute. The existing volleyball net and court area at 8317 Petrella Lane was shown on the final development plan as required. The northern boundary buffer is still 33 feet 6 inches. That did not change with the revisions. They're complying with that requirement. The eastern buffer is 69 feet wide still, and it did not change on Friday with the revisions. 89 net parking spaces are allowed and are still being permitted. Nothing with the parking lot at all changed with the revisions. The parking lot, curbs, spaces, configuration, all of that stayed the same. Finally, the last condition was that a joint statement, the joint statement between the property owners adjacent to the property rezoned and the Silver Spring House was submitted to the trustees. There was an agreement that was submitted between the attorneys and the Silver Spring House to the trustees that was incorporated into the resolution and had a number of points, most of which related to continued negotiation between the adjacent property owners and the Silver Spring House specifically around the issue of existing vegetation versus new vegetation. So because the trustees required a landscape plan that was consistent with what they approved, and because they incorporated the joint statement that encouraged changes to that plan to address the neighbors' concerns, the changes that were submitted on Friday are in compliance and complete harmony with what the trustees had envisioned when they adopted this resolution. The applicant did go work with the neighbors, and they did save some existing vegetation, and that's the revisions to the plan. Landscaping did change along the northern boundary buffer at the far western side, adjacent to the property owner that is on the corner of Petrella and Snyder. There was some vegetation along their property line that they were more interested in keeping than having replaced with new. And then along the eastern property line, I believe there is a neighbor directly to the east of the detention basin who also worked with the applicant. Some of the existing vegetation there was retained. In both cases, the mound that was proposed there was not installed, would not be installed because obviously you can't mound on top of existing vegetation. So everywhere that existing vegetation replaced proposed vegetation, the mound would not be installed. Other than that, the three-foot mound and all the vegetation along the rest of the northern property line is proposed, was approved by the trustees with no changes. So I have more details I go into, but I don't believe that that's necessary unless there are specific questions. Other than that, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have the question about the sidewalk. So the sidewalk will be right up against Snyder Road and will go to the northern boundary of the property.
Yep.
What about, there'll be a small section then, won't there, in front of a home between Silver Spring House and Petrella?
I believe the township has plans to install that sidewalk.
Because it seems a shame to just kind of leave it hanging there.
Sure.
And then any residents who might want to walk home have to go on grass to get their street.
Sure, and because this is a planned district, this is commonly required. And it ends in the middle of nowhere, but the township didn't pay for that sidewalk, the applicant did. So when a township comes back and wants to install sidewalk, they have to pay for that much less sidewalk when they do. And I believe that's the intent in this case. The township has plans to install sidewalk on the remainder of Snyder Road.
We do. And you do. Okay, thank you.
And what about on Kemper Road?
They're already there.
Oh, okay.
What's the height of the buffer fence?
Eight feet. That was, there was a variance granted for an eight-foot tall fence. Six foot is the maximum permitted height for a privacy fence. The applicant and the neighbors both requested eight feet, and the trustees granted the variance for the eight-foot fence.
What's the composition of the fence?
I'm not sure if it's wood or composite, but it's a privacy, straight slap privacy fence.
So the, the privacy fence is on top of the hill? Or is it so in essence eleven feet?
I believe it is.
Yeah.
I'm not 100% sure. It might be just behind it or on the downslope of the backside of it. I know all the landscaping is on the other side of the fence, and the finished side faces out. I know that much.
So that was, that's actually my next question. So all of the landscaping, it looks like, is on the, on the Petrella side of the privacy fence?
Correct. It's very similar to what they have now, actually.
Okay. And the Silver Spring House is responsible for maintaining, and I think at the last meeting, they talked about they would be watering it on a regular basis twice a day, I think they said.
Yeah, they're responsible for replacing it if it dies.
And then if it dies, even if it's two years from now, they're responsible for replacing it back to the same level that it's stipulated here?
Correct.
And just to clarify, all of the residents agreed to this plan?
I would hardly say all of the residents agreed to the same plan. I think there are a few here tonight that may have some differences with that statement.
Okay.
I believe that the residents that were represented by attorneys' voices were heard. But their attorney is here. I'm sure he can speak for himself and his clients.
Any other questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Snyder. We may have further questions for you as we get through this. Okay, so for everybody else this evening, we'll now hear from the applicant and give the applicant time to present. After that, we will give anybody else time who wants to present. And I may ask for like a show of hands just so that we can figure out whether we need to time limit everybody's statements or if they're going to be quick. Okay, with that said, if you don't mind stating your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Brian Dolls, Cincinnati United Contractors, representing the Silver Spring House. I'm at 7143 East Kemper Road, Cincinnati, Ohio 45249. Brian Snyder did an excellent job of recapping a lot of the changes and going through each one of the trustee's resolution points, how we've addressed them. I'm not going to go over all that. You guys did ask a couple of questions that I can answer for you. One of them being the fence. The fence is an eight-foot tall vinyl tan fence with the nice side towards the neighbors. So that's the stipulation that we've agreed to. And then that fence is also at the top of the berm, with the exception of where the berm is not. So as Brian Snyder was saying, that where we saved some of the existing trees, we couldn't berm that area because we put it over the trunks and damaged the trees. So there's a part on the west, northwest side that we do not have to berm. Then we changed it to a berm. So this is maybe the best one to show. This, I bet the land's going to plant up in the, within five or six. It, so from this side, this is where a lot of the existing vegetation and screening that we're keeping is. This is where we couldn't put the berm. And then where we get further on into the next property with the volleyball court. This one, we couldn't save the trees because they were too close to the parking lot. So we started the berm at approximately the property line between those two neighbors, and then continue it all the way down to the northeast corner. So that berm goes from here to here, and the berm does not go from here to here. So what the fence will do is it will start here at the property line, and then it will kind of start to slope up till it gets to the berm, and then it'll be on top of the berm for a while. And then it'll transition around the corner, going a little lower along the east side of the parking. So this, for the most part, in this region, has not really changed. It's just this region right here for the berm and the fence height right there. So, does that answer your question on that?
Yeah, thank you.
Other than that, I don't think there's anything else that changed that Brian Snyder hasn't spoken about. We have saved approximately 25 trees and 15 shrubs to incorporate this, which are way more mature and screening and dense than new ones, obviously. So if you have any further questions for me, I would be more than happy to answer.
I do have one, Brian. It's the canopy trees that will be planted. I thought I read somewhere that some of them could reach 35 feet in height. But what height will they be when planted?
Yeah, so there should be. I don't know what the height is. We're, so there's certain criteria. So the criteria for canopy trees.
Oh, here, now I see installation size. Sorry.
It's a column right.
Okay.
So some of them are based on caliber, some of them are based on height.
Okay.
Some of them are based on, there's another one, and those who are based on caliber and height. So you can see like the Scotty Honey Lotus, that one is three, two and a half, three-inch caliber. Whereas the Sweet Gum has a 12-foot height.
12-foot height.
Yeah, it's all dependent on what the, what the tree is.
Is the Sweet Gum one of those gum, those trees that have the gum balls that fall in?
Yes.
I believe it is, yes.
And does the, they're beautiful, I love them, but they're messy. Do the property owners that are budding that know that that's what you're putting in?
I don't, I don't know if they specifically know that or what that tree is. But that one is SSS.
You can turn around the tuskings, right?
They're, they're look like golf ball-sized little prickly things.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have, we have three of those behind Carla, and we have three of those behind Dan.
They're good.
I believe so, yeah.
They're very pretty trees.
If I could, that, that species didn't change from the trustee's approval?
No.
Okay.
No.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I have some comments on the point, but I don't know when you want to hear them.
Comments on the plan?
Yeah, on the parking configuration.
Well, I think that's already, that ship has sailed.
I see, okay.
All right. Just so, if you wouldn't mind moving that like over by Brian, maybe? Yeah, that's fine. Okay. So just in the interest of kind of time management, if I could just see a show of hands of anybody who wants to speak for, against, neutral, just so that I can see how many people are planning on talking. Okay, so three, four, all right, so we can do this. So what we're going to do is we'll first ask anybody who is supportive of this to come forward, followed by, after everybody's finished with that, anybody who's neutral to it, and then anybody who's against. And again, this will be an open forum. Please direct any questions only to us, not to the applicant or to anybody else here. And if need be, we'll address those concerns when you do come forward, if you'd state your name and address for the record. So with that said, anybody who's supportive of the proposal? Okay, seeing none, and is that a, okay. Anybody who's neutral to, to it? Okay, then if somebody would like to come forward with any issues or negative positions, state your name.
Chairman, I'd like to reserve the right to respond after I hear from the other neighbors.
You can respond to us, and then we can, yeah, okay.
I understand that.
Yeah, fair enough. Come forward.
Hi, my name is Kim Cox. My address is 8317 Petrella Lane. My husband and I are the owner of the property with the volleyball court. So as far as I understand it, I was on vacation last week, and I just got back, so I'm trying really hard to catch up to all the changes. But as far as I understand it, there's like a row of like three mature trees behind our property. And we were hoping that those mature trees that shade our yard could be saved. But as far as I understand it, those trees are too close, will be too close to the asphalt, and they can't be saved. And so that got me thinking. We have a red oak tree that's probably about eight to 10 feet north of that row of trees. And that red oak tree is probably 40 to 60 feet, if I had to estimate. And I spent today, all day, on the phone with arborist, asking what could be the effects to the red oak tree and to the three evergreens that are on our property. And they've said it's highly unlikely that the trees on our property will survive. And so this is new information to me today, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, I'm trying to digest that. It's really disappointing. The trees are beautiful, they shade our yard, we don't want to lose them. And it just, you know, became apparent to me that that's going to be a real concern today. And so I guess I'm left wondering. So the, the arborist that I spoke with and sent pictures of the trees to today, of course, they weren't actually able to come out to the yard today. And they're going to charge me about $500 per tree to do an assessment if I, you know, if I want a health assessment and a report written up about the likelihood that those trees will survive without any changes to the landscape. But I did send pictures of the plans, the measurements, and the trees in our yard, and every one of them, the three of them I spoke to, agreed that it's highly unlikely that our trees will survive in our yard. So I guess I'm left wondering, is there anything that can be done to help those trees survive? According to one of the arborists that I spoke to, there are things that can be done, but the Silver Spring House would have to be willing to consult with an arborist and work towards those items to try to help those trees survive. And if they're not willing to do that, and then those trees die, who's going to be financially responsible for the cost that's associated with the damage if they fall or the removal of those trees? And again, my goal would be to save those trees. I mean, but I don't know if we're even going to be given that option. I feel like we're running out of options here, and we're kind of being backed in a corner. So that's my concern as of today. I haven't spoken with Silver Spring House about it because it just became apparent to me that it's an issue and a concern today. I don't understand the way trees grow. I didn't understand that the roots would be that large and that they would be an issue. So that's kind of why it's the last minute, you know, came to my attention. So I don't really know how to move forward at this point.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we have any answers. We're not arborists, you know, that's not really within our responsibility. Not that I don't feel for it, and, you know, I think it's certainly something of concern, and hopefully you and the applicant can come to some kind of mutual resolution on that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any influence on that at all?
Just as a point of process, so the final development plan that's before you is slightly different than the one that was before the trustees. I pointed out that it's in my opinion that it's in harmony with what the trustees had envisioned would happen with the Silver Spring House working with the neighbors. However, the, the plan, the location of the parking areas, the grading, all of the landscaping, all of that was decided and approved by the trustees at their meeting. And if, I mean, if you were to not agree with the changes to the landscape plan between then and now, you, you would go back to basically approving what the trustees approved, which wouldn't help your situation. So the issue, the impact on your trees, all of that kind of sailed with the zone change when it was approved by the trustees, those issues. This commission doesn't have any authority really to override what the trustees already approved, which, if built the way that it was approved, would have the same impact on your tree. So I would encourage you to work with the Silver Spring House as much as possible. And based on what I've seen from them up to this point, they may be willing to work with you, but this commission cannot require it, in my opinion.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Fomaca, 8327 Petrella Lane. I have five trees right on the property line, mature maple trees. I think Kim's tree is probably 60 feet, it's a huge tree, that oak tree. Mine are probably 50 feet high. Had the same concern, we just, we just never really, I never thought about, you know, months from now and whatever they're going to do to that property, but bulldozers creeping the ground. Maple trees, as you probably know, the roots are pretty much on the surface. I mean, I don't know for sure, but I stumbled over plenty of them. So in my yard, yes, maple trees tend to be on the surface. And it's always been a problem for me, but I kind of got used to it after 22 years there. So I am now, and it's just as of this weekend, we started thinking about this last few days. I mean, but in back of my mind, I was always kind of thinking, well, they're going to plant a new tree in the corner of the new, of their property. of the new, of their property now. And there's a few other trees behind my property, I think three other ones. And to plant that tree, they're gonna have to dig down, and I have a tree right next to it. Always good thinking, how can they plant a new tree where there's a tree right there, right now? So they will definitely cut into the, the roots of my corner tree with that one in the corner. And, uh, yes, that's what I'm worried about, like, I've got, they're not, and, you know, not all the trees are perfect. They've been rotting, it's very wet back there, you know, there's some rot going on. This has, the whole property has, um, problem trees, so they're not all healthy, but there were plenty of healthy trees in here. And I, I don't want those trees to go away, number one. I mean, so that's really the top priority, to protect them. I mean, 'cause if they start rotting and dying, it's fifty years gone, so it's pretty, really important to this project. I don't think that the Silver Spring House has really thought about telling us about this stuff, 'cause I'm, they had a botanist or an arborist, I'm sorry. And, uh, I don't think they wanted to let us know that, what might happen to our trees. You know, I feel kind of deceived in that. I did send a email to Brian Friday, or, or Monday maybe, or maybe it was Tuesday, um, saying I did just have a big concern about, you know, my five trees and any, uh, bulldozer or something going through that area and stuff. And he, he mentioned one, one tree, it's a little bigger than the others, there's a lot of small trees back there. And there's a lot of, uh, undergrowth, like, you know, six and seven foot high right on the fence in there, which I'm sure they're planning to take all that out. If it was done by hand, then that would be acceptable, you know, not some bulldozer coming in and scraping the ground such. Um, he did mention that they would consider like selective demolition on that one tree, which it's really not that big a tree, it's got one whole chute going off. So the trunk may be this big, but the, the main tree's about this big. Just really worried about it. I don't, I don't think this plan should go forward, um, until these issues are resolved. Kim's tree is huge, I mean. And I've been trying, a few weeks before that, there's, there was two trees, that one I just mentioned, uh, behind my property. And there's a big one, the biggest one behind Kim's property, which has probably half the canopy, you know, it's a big one. Half the space behind her yard. I was trying to talk with Brian and say, you know, can we save at least these two trees? And not really realizing all the stuff with the roots, and if you're taking something up, you know, there's a few trees right, right by there, are you gonna kill this other tree? So I see it's, this whole process is much more complicated than I originally, um, you know, I keep saying things. And of course, it sounds stupid because I don't know what I'm talking about, but, you know, and I keep learning and learning. I did talk to the same arborist today, he called me back, that, uh, Kim talked to the day before, and he did, okay, Brian mentioned, well, we're, we're gonna be filling in dirt, so there'll be a berm kind of behind my property. And, uh, you know, he thought, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of abreviate, abreviate, abreviate planted. Um, of course, they're gonna go down, they'll probably get into the existing soil, even though there is a burn. I don't know, maybe not, but I'm kind of concerned about the big trees, even though I love to have the, the trees, so.
Right.
What do you do, so, all righty.
I appreciate your, your statement.
So my name is Kim Shieldneck, I live at eighty-three oh nine Petrella Lane. So it sounds to me like we could probably easily resolve this issue, in my mind anyway. I mean, if an arborist is required and it's five hundred bucks, if I, if I think about this logically, they, Silver Spring House does a really good job with their plants. And I think those trees complement their building and their business as well. And I don't think that they want them to go away. So, I mean, if we could get, if an arborist study was five hundred bucks?
Per tree.
Per, per tree?
Yes.
Or wouldn't it be, I mean, how many, I mean, if someone comes out there and takes a look at it and says, hey, we feel if we do this or that, and we can move forward with the plan, would Silver Spring House be ready to have someone look at that to satisfy? Because, you follow what I'm saying? If we have an arborist come out there, look at the situation and say, hey, if we dig this way or we don't dig that way, these trees will probably be okay. Does that make any sense to you guys? There, there's concerns about the trees, I get it. And, and their concern is if it dies, it's probably ten grand to take that tree down. That's their probably big, one big concern. And so that being the case, if somebody looked at it and said, well, if the parking lot is, you know, fifteen feet from the tree, what's the probability of the tree really getting, really dying? So would the Silver Spring House maybe be willing to double check on that and say, hey, you know, we have to be careful a little bit, and then it may satisfy all parties?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Let's, uh, hear from the rest of the applicants, or rest of the people.
I'm Lisa Jester, I live at eight-three six-three Hamilton Inn, and I'll tell you right up front, I live a block away. So my background, my backyard does not back up to this. But I just had a very quick point for the matter of public record. And that is, should more work be done with arborists? You need to know that, um, the arborist's report that was paid for by the Silver Spring House was apparently inaccurate in some ways, because the arborist testified that most of the large trees on the property were junk trees or not worth saving, and that many would be dead soon. So I don't know if you all have driven by the back of the Silver Spring House property, but those trees are huge and big. And in fact, I sent four pictures to the board of trustees who voted on this, thinking that those trees really were kind of junk anyway and they weren't going to be anything worth saving. If you drive by it yourself, you see that they're very healthy and prosperous and huge. In fact, the Silver Spring House has them in the back of their picture of their beautiful new addition, showing how gorgeous, you know, the landscape is. So I would only ask you to keep it in consideration that if there is more work being done for that matter, that a different arborist be used so that there's some kind of, um, more balanced perspective available to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any? Okay.
Carla Shieldneck, eighty-three oh nine Petrella. I have a couple of questions about that sidewalk and, and Snyder. Like, people just drive in my yard all the time, not for parking as much as going around the school part, uh, people that are turning into the school. So you said that sidewalk is going to continue to, um, Petrella?
That's the township.
Are they gonna, like, widen the road a little bit?
It's not, none of that is part of, sorry. None of that is part of this plan. This is only about the property that's in front of Silver Spring House.
I'm just curious, 'cause it's my property.
I mean, the zoning commission doesn't know. We have no idea, so Kelly, I don't know, you, you were the one that...
I just know they have a sidewalk plan to put sidewalks in there, I don't know the details. If you sign the paper, I can find out and, and get information.
Okay, I will.
Okay.
And then my other question is, as far as, um, the berm, the trees, are you guys planning on putting, um, that drain tile in there? Or no?
Good, if you...
Can I ask him that?
You can ask me and I can ask him. Is there any drain tile that's going in there?
Uh, yes, there is, starting at Kim and Johnny's property in front of the berm, all the way down to the corner of David's property. But it's not behind Carla's because we're saving her trees that she has back there.
And how deep might that drain go?
Uh, I don't know, but deep enough to slope it properly to get the water out.
So another concern with saving the trees, that's gonna slice right through a bunch of roots.
I mean, I know that, having put in drain tile myself, I mean, that's just kind of part and parcel of it, so.
So, um, just trying to help out these guys, 'cause I'm not having that issue. But, um, could it just be, instead of, uh, a drain tile, can it just be a tiny swale to get the water to go instead? Instead?
Well, I think there's probably a few questions that, you know, are gonna, that we, after you all have your, your comments to us, you know, we might go back to the respondent and ask some questions.
Yeah, 'cause later on, um, on that big oak tree, you know, maybe the asphalt is gonna start, you know, twenty more feet from the drainage ditch, but if they slice through the roots right there, then that's an issue. That's it, thanks.
Let me just make a quick amendment. I forgot about the drain tile, that's very important to me too. I don't think it should be in there, 'cause it'd cut right through the roots. I mean, probably two feet deep at least, well, deeper as it goes to, to the corner of my property, so. And I'm in favor of a soil, a soil too, just natural, nothing dug down.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess we will close the, wait, Brian, if I have some questions to the respondent?
Yeah, I do have to close the whole hearing, go into deliberations, but, um, yeah, I thought it was, uh...
May I just briefly, my name is Tim Burke from the Manley Burke Law Firm. I've represented Colin Rodamacher, whose property is on the east side of this. And we've worked with all of the neighbors. We were part of the agreement that was appended to the township trustees' report. I, I wish that issues around trees on their own property had come up earlier and we had had the chance to include that in prior negotiations. It didn't, and tonight's the first time I'm really hearing about that. We did all working together, and ultimately working together with Silver Springs, achieve some significant changes in their plans, including a significant reduction in the number of parking spaces they were going to have, a significant reduction in the number of hard surface asphalt they were going to have. The parking areas were moved away in a greater distance from the property owners on both the north and the east side of the property. And the thing that was left unresolved, and we were in front of the trustees, was there was still going to be an effort to try and save some of the trees. And honestly, that referred to trees on the Silver Springs property. I do, while I didn't take part specifically in the negotiations over that, I do know that this, that this Brian did meet with all of the neighbors at various times, trying to find ways to resolve and explore issues about saving trees on the Silver Springs property. In some cases that worked, in other cases, obviously, it has not worked. And Brian is in a far better position to explain why it couldn't be done on some properties. But the fact of the matter is, there are a significant number of trees that are now being saved on the Silver Springs property. Whether or not something can be worked out with regard to trees that are on the neighbor's property depends on how that can be negotiated or if it can be negotiated. But as both this Brian and your attorney know, I do an awful lot of land use work. I have represented municipalities doing land use work and represent lots of clients doing land use work. And I have a pretty good understanding of what the powers of a zoning commission are. And while I've had opportunities to disagree with Brian Schneider on a number of occasions, I can't disagree with the fact that what happens on the off-site property is not within your jurisdiction at this point. That's gonna have to be, attempted to be resolved in another manner. Thank you.
So with that, we will close the public hearing. Now we go into deliberations. So, any thoughts or comments?
So what, we can't change anything other than either approving it or not approving it, correct?
The, the township trustees approved this plan for the parking lot. The parking lot, the lighting, the interior landscaping, the streetscape buffering, all of the spaces, the layout. Um, none of that has changed since the trustees' approval. Essentially, um, I would think that what the applicant had submitted to the trustees, which is exactly the same as what was originally submitted to you in your packets, um, you don't have any authority to change that either, because that's basically what the trustees already approved. They have made changes to that plan based on the intent of the trustees to have them work with the applicant and save more trees. So that area of the landscape plan, you do have some authority over. Um, but I would think that it's either what they're proposing now or what the trustees approved. Somewhere in between, you could get into some, you know, details of how many trees, um, towards the original plan versus how many existing trees, but at that point, um, it, it's becoming very hard for you to be, um, you know, to be specific on what you want to see. Um, there's been two plans presented to you today, one that was acceptable to the trustees and one that the applicant is proposing after talking to the neighbors. Um, it would be my suggestion that you either go with one or the other, rather than trying to, to make individual changes to areas of the, um, plan that was submitted or the plan that was amended.
Are we able to approve the one that was submitted, the most recent one?
Yes.
With any provisions?
I would think that you, you, you can, yes, you can, um, you know, make changes to the final development plan before you approve it, even the one that was submitted to you, um, the revision, um, plan that was submitted to you. I would, um, essentially, I would be careful to, not to require more than what the trustees approved. 'Cause that's where you would get into some, some tricky legal areas of overriding what the trustees had said was okay with them.
Brian, I had a question, new to the board, new to this plan, seeing it recently. And I understand what I'm asking about, that the ship has already sailed, but, uh, a concern struck me in reviewing the configuration of the expanded parking lot, um, that, uh, the, uh, the main access drive is off of Snyder.
Right.
And into the north, we have the new parking. And then we have, um, uh, the, uh, the rows, parked cars parallel to the access drive. So that there'll be people backing in and out of those parking spots.
Right.
Into the main drive, which in my planning experience is not a prime way to do it. And you kind of hope for the, what's happening south of the access drive where the, uh, things are, you know, perpendicular and, uh, you don't have this backing in and out situation. Was that ever discussed as part of this?
No, I appreciate that question, we do often discuss that. We would always, as planners, prefer, prefer, um, your access drives when they come into parking lots to have, you know, curved landscape islands on both sides or a boulevard-style entrance with the parking separated from the main access drive. Um, in this case, that, that wasn't discussed currently, the, the plan as it, as it sits, has that driveway come in and there is already spaces backing out perpendicular to the main access drive, and it's been that way for a number of years. Um, so their change was really not with having parking come back out onto the main drive, that's already there today. Their change was to, to make that a double-loaded row instead of a single row. Right now, it pulls straight into the fence and the... Right now, it pulls straight into the fence and the curb just to the north of the access drive, but you're still backing out into the access drive today, so that's not a change. So no, we did not discuss that as part of this case.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I'd add is if it becomes an issue, you might want to think about parking your employees in that row adjacent to the main access drive, because there'll be fewer ins and outs during prime hours. Apart from that, I have no further comments.
I have a question for you, Brian. With respect to the revised changes on the plan that was presented to us tonight, do you have an opinion as to whether or not any of those changes would affect the longevity of the trees that the neighbors have a concern about?
I am not an arborist. I will say that some of the distances we're throwing out were wrong. 33 feet, 6 inches is the closest that a curb will get to the trees. Cutting in a drain, if that's what's required by the stormwater and infrastructure division to get that water down to that detention basin, the applicant's going to have to do that, and that's not really in our purview either at stormwater. We have stormwater officials at the county that are responsible for that. But they're not, they're not cutting into that hill, they're putting dirt on top of it. Their curb line is 33 feet away. You don't typically excavate a lot of dirt for a parking lot. So I don't, I don't have a professional opinion, but I don't believe that the impact will be as severe as it is concerned.
Thank you.
My, my, I'm just talking between us now.
Yeah.
I don't want to jeopardize what's been gained here, because it seems like there's been a lot of really positive conversation between Silver Spring House and the community. And they've really, you know, made a lot of concessions. I wouldn't, I mean, I was thinking of a provision that would require them to work with the neighbors if there's any damage, but I don't want that to be, put this whole thing in jeopardy either.
Yeah, I wonder if we could even just say something that we would encourage the Silver Spring House and the neighbors to address the stormwater retention, drain, ditch, whatever they want, and, you know, the, the health of the trees on both sides of the property.
Sorry, you have just stated that, that is on the record now, as well as the testimony of all of the neighbors that, that requested it as well. So I believe that you've made your intent clear to the applicant.
Yeah, that, that's actually exactly what I was going to say, that you've expressed it, everyone's heard it. You don't have the authority to make that, you know, a condition of any approval. That's beyond the scope. But I think you're, you've, you've expressed your intent, and everyone has heard it, but it can't be part of any.
Okay.
Condition of approval.
But our, you know, but our wish is that Silver Spring House would discuss liability with the neighbors about any potential damage. Does that make sense?
Well stated.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? If not, would somebody like to make a motion?
Well, how would we word this? Motion to approve?
We would make a motion to.
I'll take a stab if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
A motion to approve the final development plan for Case Sims 2023-01, Silver Spring House 4, to expand the existing restaurant property to allow demolition of an existing single-family home for construction of a parking lot addition.
You're incorporating your revised plan to receive on?
Correct.
June 16th?
Good point.
Well, today's the 21st.
Oh, two days ago. Yeah, that's, sorry.
So we're incorporating that?
We're incorporating that, and we would also, would we need to incorporate the trustees' resolution? No? No.
Well, I can second that.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Dose?
Yes.
Mr. Dana Miller?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Next up on the agenda, old business, seeing none, new business, seeing none. Do we have any, I guess we do have something in July now.
Yeah, we'll have.
Administrative matters, none. Okay, motion for adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Reichman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Dose?
Yes.
Mr. Dana Miller?
Yes.